If I turn your mics on?
Yes, sir.
Okay, I call to order the Roseville Board of Commissioners' regular meeting, business meeting, July 9, 2024. Welcome, everybody in attendance. Thank you for coming out tonight. Welcome you here. We're going to start off with a pledge of allegiance, and we'll stand for that. And also, if you would, remain standing. We got Steve Davis, Bethlehem Baptist Church, here with us tonight. He's going to lead us in invocation. So would everybody stand, and thank you for coming, Steve.
Pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
May we pray together. Heavenly Father, we thank you for being able to live into, in a beautiful community. We thank you, Father, for the privilege you give to us of being able to be surrounded with all the blessings that you give to us. Father, tonight, as this town board, as the mayor, as the staff and each one meet together, as the members of this community meet together, we pray that you will give wisdom, give leadership, give direction, dear Father, as we meet together, as we reason together, dear Father, and allow your leadership to make a difference. Father, we know that no matter where we are, there are challenges before us. No matter what we face, dear Father, the challenges sometimes can be overwhelming to us. But we know, dear Father, you're God who can help us all. So tonight, I pray that you might help in each decision that will be made. We pray that you'll give wisdom, give leadership, and give insight, and we'll thank you for it, for we ask it in Christ's name. Amen.
Amen.
Amen. Thank you, Pastor. Appreciate you coming out, really do. We needed it tonight, so thank you much. Okay. First item we got is a proclamation, I think, and it's for Parks and Recreation for that time of the month, or year. Paul, you want to read? Paul is the Recreation, Parks and Recreation liaison for us, serving the board as a communications to Parks and Recs. So, Paul, if you would, read that.
Yeah. Designation of July is Park and Recreation Month, whereas Parks and Recreation is an integral part of communities throughout this country, including town of Roseville, and whereas Parks and Recreation promotes health and wellness, improving the physical and mental health of people who live near parks, whereas Parks and Recreation promotes time well-spent in nature, which positively impacts mental health by increasing cognitive performance and well-being, leaving illnesses such as depression, attention-deficit disorders, and Alzheimer's. Whereas Parks and Recreation encourages physical activities by providing space for popular sports, hiking trails, swimming pools, and other activities designed to promote active lifestyles. Whereas Parks and Recreation is a leading provider of healthy meals, nutrition services, and education. And whereas Parks and Recreation programming and education activities such as out-of-school time programming, youth sports, and environmental education are critical to childhood development. Whereas Parks and Recreation increase a community's economic prosperity through increased property values, expansion of the local tax base, increased tourism, the attraction and retention of businesses, and crime reduction. And whereas Parks and Recreation is fundamental to the environmental well-being of our community. And whereas Parks and Recreation is essential and adaptable infrastructure that makes our communities resilient in the face of natural disasters and climate change. Whereas our parks and natural recreation areas ensure the ecological beauty of our community and provide a place for children and adults to connect with nature and recreate outdoors. And whereas the U.S. House of Representatives has designated July as Parks and Recreation Month, whereas Town of Roseville recognizes the benefits derived from Parks and Recreation resources. Now therefore be it resolved, our Mayor Ronnie Curran, Town of Roseville, that July is recognized as Parks and Recreation Month in the Town of Roseville.
Thank you, Paul. That's great. Appreciate that. Jim is not with us at the moment, but I did talk to him this afternoon, and they do a tremendous job over there. And actually, as it talks about here, we're recognizing this as Parks and Recreation Month. The show is dedicated to Parks and Recreation Thursday night. We'll have Paul on there representing the board as liaison to Recreation, and also June. June is, Green is our Parks Director, is scheduled to be on there, too. And we're going to be talking about some of these things you read about here, Paul. So if you available, 7 o'clock Thursday night, learn more about Parks and Recreation Town of Roseville. Thank you. Thank you, Paul. Appreciate that.
One thing to add about Parks and Recreation Month, June is not here, but he did retain some trail art. I don't know if you all saw them or found one, but they're little mushrooms. And so there's one for each of you in the box here to me, beside me, and so be sure to grab them from me on the way. But he wanted to send his regards, and also had left some information about 4th of July, but in sum, it went very great. They had to make some pivots with some traffic control later on tonight, but everybody that had attended, the rain held off and everything went well, but he wanted to wish you all a happy Parks and Recreation Month with the trail art.
Awesome.
Thank you.
Yeah. Thank him. Like I said, I talked to him this afternoon. They're doing a great job of Parks and Recreation, and we'll talk about it a little bit, right, Paul? But they're really doing a great job, and I really appreciate all he does, for sure. Next item is consideration approval of the agenda, so you guys can have the agenda in front of you. Is any discussion on agenda? If not, I will entertain a motion.
So moved.
I think I heard, yeah, and a second. So any other discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Not hearing any? And then consideration approval of the consent agenda. You can see items is amendments from the 7th, 21st, June 4th, and June 18th. Power bill, street list, strategic plan, and then it's a call for investigation sufficiency for a couple, a couple hearings there. One is on School Street, 200 School Street. So I entertain a motion for the consent agenda.
So moved.
Second.
Okay. Got a motion, second. Any other discussion? If not, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you. Thank you, board. Appreciate that. Then, next item, public ear heard. Anybody signed up? Nobody signed up. Okay, public, you know, come on out and speak if you need to. Town Board liaison report. So we're going to hear from some reports from our commissioners, starting with Commissioner Austin on veterans. Anything to report from the veteran's side?
Yes, sir. Good evening, everyone.
Good evening.
All right. July 9, 2024. Our veterans report read as follows. Today marks the 106th birthday for the warrant officer corps across our military forces. Warrant officer is a highly specialized expert and trainer who, by gaining progressive level of expertise and leadership, operates, maintains, administers, and manages their military branches' equipment, support activities, or technical systems for an entire career. I myself served as warrant officer for eight years out of my 17 years in the United States Army, so happy birthday to the warrant officer corps. Retirement. The Navy Talent Acquisition Group is having a retirement for Commander Ian Lopez on July 12 at 10:00 hours at North Carolina State University, located at McKinnon Center and 101 Gorman Street. Commander Lopez is also a resident of Roseville, but when he was the intag commander, he maintained for three and a half years the number-one recruiting across the United States. So congratulations to him on his retirement. Veteran Bridge Home. On Thursday, July 25, they will be hosting an event at the Stevie and Acoyne Military Family Center located in Fayetteville. From 5:30 to 7:30 p.m., this event is called Navigating the Journey. It's a self-care and work-life balance for military spouses. Boxing classes. Coach CJ Jones, he's also a Marine, was a Marine, always a Marine, of Grit City Boxing and Fitness, located at 8813 Gulf Court, Unit Foxtrot in Raleigh, is offering free boxing classes to veterans and their dependents on Wednesdays from 2:00 p.m. to 3:00 p.m. and on Saturdays at noon. This workout will build strength, increase fitness, building confidence, as well as learning to defend yourself. Coffee with a veteran meets every third Saturday of the month, located at Arise, but the date for this month would be 20th of July. But for this month, it would not be your normal veterans coffee. The Disabled American Veteran, Wake Chapter, well, I'm sorry, Wake County, Chapter 1 will be hosting it. They will be ready to assist veterans and their caregivers and their spouses with any questions that they may have. And then the veteran fellowship breakfast will be held at IHOP at 9:30 on the last Wednesday of the month. More to follow. The Joel Fund. The Joel Fund is starting their Fall Operation Art Session, starting on August 5 through September 13. The registration opens on July 11. Their hybrid Veterans Coffee Connection will be held on Wednesday, July 24 at 8:30, located at 822 South White Street, 106 Wake Forest, NC. And one day, we'll be saying they'll be hosting it in Main Street in Roseville. And then the Roseville Men's Bible Study each Tuesday evening from 7:00 p.m. to 9:00 p.m., so they should be there right now. And that will complete my report.
Thank you, Commissioner. That's a good report. You mentioned the Joel Fund would be in Roseville. I do know I noticed this past couple weeks, the Wake County's updated the records where it does show that the property is owned by the Joel Fund, which is really a good sign. And that property has been in one family probably over 200 years, I would think, and you know, now it's owned by the Joel Fund, and talking to the last people on it that's in the family, they were just so thrilled that it went to something like the veterans and the Joel Fund rather than some other use of it. And I don't think that would have happened without Dan working with the Joel Fund. So appreciate you, Dan. You did a really good job of recruiting them to town and getting them here, so thank you so much for that. Appreciate you. Thanks. Commissioner Long, Public Safety. Anything to report?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. We have just a few updates. Wanted to remind our citizens of a few things. First and foremost, this is the second week of the North Carolina Governor's Highway Safety Program, and in our first week, our officers found that we caught 104 traffic violations in the first week of July alone. So people, please be on your guard as you drive through our Roseville, and please, please follow the law. Secondly, we would like to encourage that throughout the summer, there will be popsicles with police. And throughout the summer, you may see officers out at one of the town's wonderful parks with a cooler full of popsicles or ice cream to share. Please stop and grab a popsicle to cool down and have a chat with one of our officers. No dates are scheduled. At the moment, these will be pop-up events. Please mark your calendars. Start marking your calendars now. October 1 for National Night Out. Again, National Night Out is an annual community-building event that promotes police-community partnerships and neighborhood camaraderie. Please start putting on your date, September 1, excuse me, October 1, 2024. Last but not least, we are still doing our helmet safety citation program. So any children that we find that are wearing their helmets safely as they ride their bicycles throughout the community between the months of May and September, if we are able to catch them doing the right thing, we'll give them a citation of love, which will be a meal of their choice from McDonald's, or something to that degree. And also from a update for the fire, we are still working through our unification, and we are in the next phases of that. And so again, thank you for all those who have been involved, and that is my update at this time, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, Commissioner Long. Appreciate that. And he mentioned the tickets, and just as a public service message, I guess.
Yes.
You know, with all the road construction going on and the road closures and stuff, I think it's been more tickets rode than probably usual. And you know, and that's to keep the traffic down and keep the speed down, really. And you know, I just warn all people coming, either live here or coming through town, just be mindful that we are in a construction phase. And I had a father of a 16-year-old call me this week, and you know, he got a, he's 16-year-old, and he got a stop line, a stop sign violation ticket. And I told him, I said, you know, this time, with everything going on, you know, just make sure you obey the laws, because I can't get him out of it. So he don't need to call me if you get a ticket, for sure. But just be mindful of all the work going on, all the traffics out there. Just obey the speed laws, obey the stop signs, you know, obey where you park, because I think there is some parking violations tickets being given out, too, I think, right? So if you parking in the wrong place, you parking in somebody's yard or somewhere you don't need to be, you know, you're going to be ticketed for that, too. So this is going to end soon, so just be mindful of that. Any, I see you reaching for something.
Yeah. If I could add, just because it's lawful, that does not mean it's acceptable. And so please be mindful of pedestrians. Please be mindful of people that are walking in the summertime. Please be mindful of residents that live on these streets, particularly the local detours. It's very important that you slow down. I don't know what we can do if it's within the law, but it is just simply not safe. We're still working out ways to taper off some of the speeding and the volume that's been pushed onto these other streets since the closure of the intersection. And so as we continue to work through that, we just ask everyone to please just slow down and be mindful. It's not, leave early. Slow down. Take the detours, please.
How many tickets you say?
There were 104 violations written in the first week of July, and we are in a four-week North Carolina Governor's Highway Safety Program, so I would like to curtail that number by quite a bit, Mayor.
Yeah, I seen quite a few stopped. I saw one stop today on Granite Falls Boulevard, so you know.
I did yesterday a couple times.
Yeah, saw it twice yesterday, huh? So you know, that's a 20, most of our streets, most of our streets are 25 miles an hour, and that's what you should be running if you're coming through here. But 100 and...
104.
Wow.
In one weekend, first week, excuse me.
Thanks. Appreciate that. Commissioner Paul, senior citizens, anything to report?
Yes, sir. I've got a few things. Thank you. So on June 14, Mayor Curran and I attended a roundtable discussion on the rising cost of senior housing in Wake County, and more specifically in our district. An event was hosted by State Representative James Roberson. The event was well-attended. Four towns, Wake County HUD, North Carolina Housing Finance Agency, and others were at the event. During the event, I provided a high-level overview of the senior affordable housing project that has been presented to the town of Roseville. Consensus was overwhelmingly positive, with participants wanting to be kept abreast of our progress, that they might follow in our footsteps. This was encouraging and makes me believe we have a very good solution for at least some of the portion, some portion of the affordable housing problem affecting our town and many others. Along those lines, I'm forming an advisory committee of Roseville residents to assist with senior affordable housing issues and others affecting our senior community. Plan to hold our first meeting in September, when the summer is over. In addition, we're creating a senior community page on the town website, and we now have a communications director again, which is wonderful news. Page will provide information on upcoming events, items of interest, educational pieces, so please stay tuned. In conjunction with the previous two items, we're interested in putting together a survey to request input from our residents on the livability of our town. The survey will encompass issues affecting our entire community, not just seniors. More to follow on that one. With respect to events, the Senior Network has a full calendar this month, including educational, social, and entertainment events. In addition, they are hosting a charity golf tournament at Heritage Golf Course on Thursday, September 12, to raise money to purchase a passenger van for the organization. Please visit their website at theseniornetwork.org for more information. And finally, our own Parks and Rec is hosting more and more events for our senior community. For example, they're hosting Bingo on July 10 and July 24 at 10:00 a.m. For more information, visit the town website at rosevillnc.gov/parksandrec. That's my report. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner. And just to expand, he mentioned we went on the, we went to the discussion of senior housing that was, Representative Robison hosted it over in Knightdale. Very good event, and he's right. The proposal that is kind of under discussion here in Roseville with the idea of our property out back that's, that can be used for senior affordable housing, really, and it was well perceived. So I think, you know, we've been up to our ears in this, I guess, this road closing and all the construction work, but at some point in time, I think, Eric, we need to kind of figure out how do we continue that discussion, because it is some pretty good ideas if we can work that out. But don't put that as your priority right now. Road closing is a priority, and we'll get that, you know, but thank you. Thank you for the work you're doing. Commissioner Snead, Planning Board.
We had our last meeting on June 24, and to continue on with the senior conversation, we had age, we spoke about age-restricted lots, and actually, there was an LDO amendment to the table for residential high-development standards, and that was centered around the age-restricted dwellings. So right now, another line item has been added to that section of the LDO for a maximum of eight dwellings per acre for age-restricted land. And also, we have a lot width of 40 feet for single-family detached, age-restricted, 4,000 square feet, single-family age-detached, age-restricted, and 1,900 square feet, age-restricted is the minimum area. So a lot of conversation went into that, and I'm happy to see that we now have age-restricted lots outlined in our LDO. At the meeting, we also had, there's a gentleman by the name of Tanner, who works in our planning department, and he, along with the rest of the team over there, has been doing some pretty amazing work, and it's going to be rolled out to the public soon. But he is working on a residential inventory. He's been doing residential inventory research, and it was pretty interesting. And he has outlined that there are approximately 9,186 lots that have been approved to be built between now and within approximately the next 10 years. That's a lot of lots. It is. And for single-family homes, it was 7,182, and 2,000 for townhomes. And so what he is doing is, he is putting together a program, that's inventory research, that's one thing. And then he's also putting together a program that walks everybody, the public and the developers, through the stages of a development, from the time that it's initially submitted to the town until it's approved and ready to be built. So we'll be able to follow along, click on a link, and see exactly where that developer is in the process. It's pretty amazing. He's doing a lot of work in this, and the team, I guess, has put a lot of effort into it, so it's going to be pretty exciting to see that when it rolls out. And that is it that we had for the Planning Board. It was a quick, short meeting.
Yeah. Thank you, Commissioner Snead. I think it was a short meeting, but also it was a really good meeting.
Very good.
Really hard work you put in, and serving as liaison with that, for sure. Appreciate you doing that. Also, you know, I know Meredith's not here, but you know, it's a lot, the planning department is doing a lot right now. It's like one on. And I think we're going to, we're still working on getting them some new facilities, right? Is that, I hadn't heard anything the last few weeks, but I know Main Street has been kind of the big topic, but...
Yes. So they have signed the lease to move into the space. It will offer up six additional offices for the planning department to work out of, which is plenty of room for their current staff, and gives them room for growth. We are currently waiting for Ting and the other security or TRM technology services, essentially ensuring that they can be connected to us virtually, and a few other things are being handled within the house right now. And so once those things are done, they should be able to move in. The anticipated move-in date is first week of August, and furniture will be arriving later, but we're trying to figure out how we can get them moving to that space sooner than later, so we can start transitioning. And since we have several staff members that we're hiring and onboarding right now into the departments that will remain here in Town Hall to occupy their spaces, so we're just moving along.
That's good. That's good. Thank you for that. And thank you, Commissioner Snead. Appreciate your work. And last but not least, always to be, Paul, Parks and Recreation Advisory Board.
Yeah. Real quick, our last meeting, we found out the Farm Entrance is out to bid now. We hired a new athletic coordinator. The, we discussed a couple events, and then we've had some since. Memorial Mile, Juneteenth, a litter sweep, and the 4th of July were all held. And then we also reviewed a proposed layout for the Pine Glow Development and how we could tie that into walkability. So that's all I have for now.
Thank you. Appreciate that.
Sir, I have an alibi addition to my report. I forgot I received an email today from the Navy, which is in agreement to establish the Navy National Defense Cadet Corps to be effective on July 1, 2025. It was signed by Dr. Taylor, the superintendent, as well as the Navy commander. So Colonel Clark, what we're going to do now is have a meeting with Dr. Perry to establish a location and start getting the kids involved.
That's great news. That really seals the deal.
Yes, yes.
Yeah, that's great. That's something I've been working on for a while. Dan's put a lot of work in that, and we didn't quite get it this year.
Yeah.
It'll be this fall, but it'll be fall of 2025, for sure, so.
Yes, sir.
Great, great job. Thanks. Communications from the staff. I think we've got a human resource director here who's going to give a update. So welcome, Lisa. Hope you're doing well.
Good evening, Board, Mayor, Eric, Aaron. My last couple of updates have had a construction-based theme, and I was a little bit wary about approaching that same theme tonight with everything that's been going on, and I didn't want anybody to have a negative reaction to my update, but the more I thought about it, the more I talked with Eric, it is what it is. We are in a construction phase. We're in a construction phase when it comes to the town, to the community. We're in a construction phase when it comes to the town. We're in a construction phase when it comes to the organization. So we have to call it what it is. It's construction. I think we just need to change the lens that we look at it. Right now, I think that, well, I know that we are straying away from the concept of team because so much is going on. And I think we have to rein ourselves in. And I am changing my update, I'm sorry, midstream, based on a conversation that I overheard. And ladies, I'm not trying to put you on the spot, I promise you. I wanted to do something with you all. There's something to your left wrapped in white that says, "Do not open." Can you please open it now? In fact, Eric, if you don't mind, can I have yours? There's a method to my madness, I promise.
Mine is shedding, I think.
All of this plays into the construction thing.
Okay, okay.
What I would like you to do is take your Sharpie and write what's important to you on your brick. And the same for you. Because write what's important to you, what brought you out tonight, what's important to you, write it on the brick. Are y'all done?
I think so. Paul's still writing.
The reason that I asked you to do this is because each one of those bricks, basically the same size, same weight, different ones might have a couple of chips here, a couple of blemishes. But when I went to Lowe's and purchased those bricks today, I made sure that I picked the very best bricks that I could find. None of those bricks were perfect. None of those bricks. And with that said, since they were not perfect, but they are all basically the same, they're good bricks. They're sturdy. And we cannot build anything with just one brick. Just because something is important to you, Commissioner Long, doesn't give it any less weight than what's important to the mayor, or what's important to these ladies back here, or what's important to George and Betty. Because we're all Team Roseville, all of us. Every one of us in this room has a vested interest in the town of Roseville. If not, we wouldn't be here. And I apologize for listeners here, conversation. I'm very, very sorry. But I just want you to know, we do care. We, I promise you, we care. From the employee standpoint, I'm going to take each one of those bricks back to the staff, staff development team. And Lieutenant Williams is on that staff development team, and he knows what we discuss. He knows what the expectations are. But we're going to take each one of those bricks back to the staff development team, and we're going to talk about them. Because the employees are the ones who actually provide the services. When you have a question about something specific, you go to the employees. When something needs to be done out in the field, the employees complete those tasks and duties. After completing this exercise, I just ask you, please don't lose sight of the fact that even though every one of our bricks is important, the mortar that holds those bricks together is going to, is, it's going to build our foundation, it's going to build our structure. And our employees are our mortar. But we're all in this thing together, all of us. Your bricks, your bricks, and our mortar. So it's going to take all of us. I'm going to flip through what was going to be my presentation, real quick. As far as the construction that's going on within, within the organization, of course, we have certain steps. You know, the conception, choosing your team, you know, your method of delivery. Then there's the design. What is it going to look like? What's important? Then we have to do the pre-construction. That involves budget, logistics, things of that nature. But then there's the actual construction, getting out there and building our structure. Then once we are done with the construction, then there's a closeout. That's when we turn the structure over to the occupants. When it comes to the internal team, the occupants are the employees. Because we want them to feel empowered and safe enough to bring their whole selves to work. Because if they feel safe enough and empowered enough to do that, they're going to go the extra mile for you. They're going to go the extra mile for you. But we just can't lose sight of the fact that it takes all of us. You may have seen this before in one of my previous updates, but it's still relevant and it's very, very important. Even though we have several different tiny triangles, they all create one large triangle. We have chosen to take a look at our organizational culture because organizational culture plays into everything else. If the organizational structure is not sound, nothing else will be in alignment. Organizational structure builds into team dynamics, strategic planning, and leadership development. It's a continuum. And it's something that the town manager is committed to making sure we get right. And before I mentioned that the employees are the mortar. These are our newest employees. We have Roseanne Bauer. She's in planning. She's the development support specialist. We have Tanner Haslett. April, you spoke about him. He's the Planner One. We have Stephen Lewis. He's our newest employee in Public Works. We have Ryan Garrett. He's the new program administrator in Parks and Recreation. I'm sorry, program coordinator. And we have Candace Scarberry. She's our new communication specialist. I know I'm only highlighting the new employees, but I can't highlight the current employees enough. Because I may be biased, but I think we've got some of the best employees around. Something that is also worthy of being on a brick is partnerships. Because you, you guys have highlighted partnerships in your strategic plan. Even though my position is not as outward facing as some, I take advantage of every opportunity that I can to form. And they're going to be adding carpentry, construction, electric, and heating, heating and air to the program. And they also offer certifications for Adobe and project management. With everything that's going on in the town right now, I saw this as an opportunity to not only benefit the town, but also benefit those employees, I'm sorry, benefit those, those students. I've entered into an agreement to form an internship program. We're going to have some of those students go through the interview process, just like everybody else, else would, to give them that experience. They're going to get feedback from that experience. And we're going to place them in different departments within the town. It's going to be, I think, 120 hours. Yes, they have to work 120 hours. And it's unpaid, but they will, they will receive performance evaluations from the departments, but also they'll be evaluated by the program coordinator. So they'll receive feedback from all different angles. And I think that's very, very beneficial for them. And it's also going to introduce them to local government as a potential career choice. Because a lot of, a lot of people overlook local government. And there are a lot of opportunities here. And since a lot of these students are from Roseville, there's no reason in the world why we can't expose them to as much as we possibly can. So they'll want to come back to Roseville. Now, with that said, since I was totally off course, and I'm sorry, I am open to any questions that you may have about the madness that we just experienced earlier, or anything that we've got going on.
No? Start by one question. I know we're just nine days into the new year. And I know the new year was some new positions. How are they coming? Do you have a status on? The one, the two that I'm really thinking hard about is the Assistant Town Manager and the Project Manager. Because Eric, Eric is doing three jobs right now with all this construction work going on. It's just, he, he has it up to here. So how's those come along especially?
It's open until field, but the first review of the applications, I believe, is the 11th of July. We're going to go through and review all of the applications that we've seen, determine who meets minimum qualifications. And then at that point, they're going to go through an assessment process. Those that we identify as the most qualified, they'll go through an assessment process where they have to do certain exercises, and we'll go from there. We'll keep whittling it down until we get the most qualified candidate for the position. But we're, we're definitely not going to drag our feet on it because Eric does need help.
Yeah. You've done a lot in nine days then, so good, good job on that. But Eric, I have to just commend him. He's just really been a trooper with doing his old job, new jobs, and everything else.
May I ask a question for clarity, just because I would like to know? What's the standard hiring process time length? What does that look like typically, Assistant Town Manager or any other executive roles? Are we talking 45 days, 60 days? What does that typically look like, start to be, start to finish?
It depends on the number of applications we get. As soon as we find out about a vacancy, we go in, we look at that position and determine whether or not we need to change the job description or anything like that. And in some instances, do we need to fill the position? But of course, in this instance, we need to fill the position. We post the position. Usually with upper, I'm sorry, upper management positions, they're open until field, just to make sure that we get a good pool of candidates. And this position, it's open. We've been getting applications from out of state, many applications from out of state. We just want to make sure we give everybody the opportunity to see the vacancy and give everybody the opportunity to apply. Once, I think the review period is what bogs a lot of people down. But on the 11th, we're going to start reviewing those applications immediately. We should know who we want to move to the next level, I would say, within two days. And we're going to have exercises, interview questions, everything already prepared. That way, we don't have to waste time trying to generate those things after the fact. Preparation is key when you're trying to fill a position. So we are, we're going to make sure that we're prepared to get the position filled not only as quickly as possible, but as efficiently and as effectively as possible. So to answer your question, if it's open until field, there needs to be some movement at 30 days. And our movement is the first review of the applications and starting the process of screening those applications to see who we want to interview. It can take an additional three weeks because we have to schedule the interviews. We have to make sure we have an interview panel that has, well, that's, that's made up of subject matter experts, that's made up of individuals who will have to work with that person. And all of that takes time because you have to coordinate schedules and things like that.
Thank you.
How many, I'm sorry, how many applications do you have? I mean, how, yeah. How many responses?
The last time I looked, I want to say it was 20 something. But I haven't looked in a couple of weeks.
One more question. So if no one in this pool seems to be what we're looking for, is there an option, a possibility to have an interim, someone just in there to help long enough? So then?
I have, I have interviewed two people who are managers in transition, but they have limitations within their separation agreements that prevent them from working the amount of hours that I would need them to work. So to answer your question, yes, I've already, I started looking into that late last month in hopes of being able to make a move on that July 1. But I've had two meetings with managers with experience that are very tenured and have the technical background of engineering and what have you to be able to absorb the Assistant Town Manager responsibilities and the capital improvement project manager responsibilities in the interim basis. But I have not been able to find anyone who has the legal availability. But they are offering up their support in a pro bono way, for lack of a better, I don't know the word, to do it free, just in service to the profession. And so I've been able to work through several things with them to help expedite some things. One of them is the Assistant Town Manager process. Lisa explained it to you, but to answer your question on time wise, it typically takes about six months to hire an executive role. I know that my position was posted when I came onboard on July 1. My start date was November the 19th. The goal is to have someone within 90 days, but I do think that that's lofty, given just how complex it has been. When I was onboarded here, being the first, it was a little bit more simple to do it because the position hadn't been kind of molded. Right now, over my time here, it's been, become more of an operations oriented portfolio. And so it needs to be someone that can that can lead Parks and Recreation, Public Works, what will be the initiation of our engineering department as we bring on stormwater technician and then a stormwater manager next year. And that hopefully will also, hopefully, will create an opportunity where planning can roll into their portfolio as well. And so that's the goal for that one, that particular role as it become, as it relates to an organizational strategy for, that I've kind of thought out as far as to keep our current trajectory in the partnerships that have formed over time with the different departments that are working with one another. And so that's the focus, to kind of narrow it down. I'm not looking for another me. In that, I'm not expecting someone to have a PE or anything like that. But definitely having some competency when it comes to that, to be able to lead those departments at a high level. Because they've really, we've made some changes in the approved budget. There was an organizational structure change in there too, which is the formal reporting of the Parks and Recreation Department to the assistant town manager.
And we are focusing on efficiency, not only with this process, but with every, every position that we fill. If there's anything that we can cut out that's unnecessary, we cut it out because the labor market has changed. People aren't waiting around for two, three, four, five months anymore. So whatever we can do on our end to make sure the process is a speedy process, but also an efficient process, we're doing it.
Question for you. In your opening statement, you said, "Change the lens of how we see things."
Yes.
Could you elaborate a little bit more?
Yes. And I'm going to give you an example. I have many random conversations with Eric. And I listen to a lot of the things that he tells me and the way that he presents it. Because the way that I look at everything is through a human resources lens. And sometimes I have to make the conscious effort to change the way that I look at it. After I talk to him and he tells me everything that's going on, then I have to change the way that I look at things. So that's what I meant about that.
And then the second question is, are you still doing your monthly most wanted?
Oh, Roseville's most wanted every quarter. Yes, 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 yes. We are. And we have chosen an employee of the quarter. They don't know it yet, so I can't tell you who it is. But something that I do want to tell you all, of course, you know that we have the newsletter that comes out. Being that you all are part of Team Roseville, you're going to be part of the newsletter too. We're going to be interviewing you. We want to find out what makes you tick, what's important to you. Because staff need to know you. You're the governing body. They need to know who you are and what you're about. So you're going to be a part of that too. You're Team Roseville. And citizens, don't be surprised if you see one of us out just asking you random questions because you're part of Team Roseville too.
Thank you.
No other questions? Thank you, Lisa.
You are welcome.
Thank you.
Appreciate, appreciate your hard work.
I'm assuming you want to leave the brick right here. We're not taking these home.
Do not take the bricks. Do not take the Sharpies.
Thank you. Thank you very much. New item or new businesses? Community group funding? Who's taking charge? Is that you, Eric, or Paul? Okay, Paul, I'm going to turn it over to you then. I see everybody interested. It is in your agenda package, I think, starting on page, what?
Page 43.
43.
Yep. So every year, we open up a time slot to have people put in applications for community group funding. The group funding is for people, for groups that would actually, that can actually help out people in Roseville. It's to kind of help them, try to give them, some people a jumpstart, some people regular assistance. But it's really just, you have to be a nonprofit in order to apply. And what we do is we get the applications in, take a look at them, see what they're all about, make sure it's legal for us to give them money for the things they're doing, and then bring it before the board to actually approve. So we had four groups that actually applied this year. And their applications are actually in our thing, but I will go over them real quick with you just to kind of give you an overview. The first one is Roseville High School Band. Roseville High School Band, they have a booster group. And if you know anything about the high schools or the schools in general, they get the minimum of what they need. There's no room for buying new instruments. There's no room for anything else. It is just straightforward, basically the basics. So what they were asking for is $2,500 in order to help fund new instruments for their group. So that was the first application we received. The second one, Thorn to Rose, is a nonprofit that looks to help with mental health. They include fundraisers. They provide school supplies giveaways. And they hold other events throughout the year to help out with recognizing mental health and the help you need for that. They are requesting $2,500 as well. Villas Church, Roseville. They're a new applicant this year. They are focusing this year on the Granite Acres subdivision. It's a group of 60 mobile homes. They help with a biweekly food distribution. They're looking to also maybe add a little library out there. Some of the people that live there might need some minor repairs to their homes. And also holding community forums for people to, if they might need to learn English, if they might need to know how to do things and that, to help everybody out in that community. They requested $5,000 for that. The final application was Wake County DAV. We're well aware of them. But if you, in case you're not, benefits assistance for new and existing veterans. We have lots of veterans in Roseville. We have new veterans moving every day into Roseville. And that's to help them out with looking into their benefits. They requested $1,500. And that was the four that applied. And I want to thank Mayor Protem Snead for assisting me in reviewing these as well. And would like to put those before you for acceptance. Oh, I also want to add. We, when we started this, we started this, I think it's two or three years ago. I want to say three years ago. We started off with a low amount as a growing community. I think we started out with $7,000 to $8,000. And we've kind of been trying to add to that every year. So last year, we were at $10,000. This year, we've added to $12,000. We're trying just to add to that every year to see if we can help more and more groups out as they come available, so.
So we have enough money to fully fund all four?
Yeah, we're at $11,500 and we have $12,000 in our budget.
So are you asking for consideration of this? Did you, did you make that in the form of a motion that you want us to consider?
Sure.
All right. All right. So I got a motion and a second. Now we can discuss this. Is there any discussions on this?
I, just so that I can understand it. I like clarity because I'm trying to get clarity. Just to be sure that I understand you correctly, you're asking for support for all four of these ventures. And specifically, the school one, as a previous band member in my youth days, is very important. If we found that they needed more at another time, could they come back later?
Yeah, it's open every year for them to apply. Yep, so if, we have an actual window when the nonprofits can apply for it.
Okay.
Yep.
Thank you.
So since we have, to Commissioner Long's point, we have $500 more than what the total ask is. I concur that the band is probably woefully underfunded. Can we look at adding the 500 to their request since we have it? And they never have anywhere near enough funds to do what they do.
That's entirely up to the board.
Yeah.
That's essentially.
You would have to amend your motion if you want to do that, Paul.
I amend the motion to add that piece that we just discussed.
Okay, I will amend the motion to approve all of the four that applied for the funding and adding an additional $500 to the Roseville High School request.
Who's second in the first round?
Second.
All right. All right, now we're back legal again. Any other discussion, any other discussion on this at all?
They just added the extra $500 to the band.
It's for the kids.
And each of these are documented in, in the packet? Is that right? So we have all of the backup for why and what they're requesting and.
So is that okay?
We were just discussing. I think typically you all have done a memo that summarizes this and then bring it back to consent agenda. Does that sound like the process?
Since that amount has been amended, probably have to.
Yeah, it doesn't, whatever.
I think that that sounds like the process that has been typically happening. So if, it sounds like everyone's in agreement with, with the amounts and everything. So I think that can be summarized and then brought back at the next meeting on consent.
Okay.
Set down.
Okay.
I'm just, out of curiosity, is there a deadline for the funding to be received by?
No. As long as it's, we've already approved our budget now.
Good, good. Thank you.
All right. So I think we had to make one more amendment.
To be brought back to as a consent agenda item.
And second. I think we're back legal again. Any more discussion? I think, I think you're talking about, if I recall, $12,000 full funding.
Right.
The band gets the leftover.
Right.
And then we'll put it on the consent agenda, consideration. Final consideration. Any other discussion? Not all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Not hearing any. Proven amnesty, thank you, Paul. Appreciate that. The next item is appointment to the planning board and the Board of Adjustment. And I can set it up and then you can take over if you want to. But kind of what this is, is a mid-year thing. Mr. Steve Hill, which was in the ETJ on the planning board, that lived out off of Burlington Mills Road, I think, resigned and moved out of the ETJ, which opened up the vacancy. And I think his term, if I'm right, Robin, expires at the end of this year. So we was kind of looking for someone that's experienced. If we don't have to train for six months. And at the suggestion of some, we've had a couple of names come up. So you want to take it from there?
Okay. It has been suggested that Mr. Frank Pierce, since he has served on the board for so many years and he's very familiar with the process, that he moved from the Board of Adjustments to the Planning Board to serve out the remainder of Mr. Hill's term, which will be until December. So that'll be for the next five months? Six months, five months? And then since, once he moves from the Board of Adjustments, then his position will need to be filled on that, on that board. And I understand that there is another, there has been an application for a gentleman, Mr. Fox, if I'm finding that correctly.
Daniel Fox.
Who would fill that position?
Daniel, yeah, Daniel Fox. And Daniel Fox lives where, you know, big from?
Tuckahoe Trace?
Tuckahoe, yeah, Tuckahoe Trace. So. Okay.
That's the ETJ position.
Mm-hmm, yeah. Both of them are ETJs. So. And I think his, his would expire in 18 months. So his is a midterm, you know, short term too. I think, I think the planning board and also the, is interested in the Board of Adjustments not to be shorthanded, so kind of why we're doing this.
Right.
Make a motion.
Okay, so then I would like to make a motion that Mr. Frank Pierce fill the vacancy of the Planning Board created by Steve Hill through the end of, through, until Steve's term ends on December 31st, 2024. And then I'd also like to make a motion, add to that motion, that Mr., his name is off my screen.
Daniel Fox.
I'm sorry, Mr. Fox. Be appointed to the Board of Adjustments until the end of Mr. Pierce's term, to fill Mr. Pierce's term till the end of 2025.
I'll second it.
Okay. So I got a motion second. Now we can further discuss this. So I think the rationale, that both boards wanted someone and they did not want to give up Frank until they had a replacement for Frank because they don't want to be short on the adjustment, Board of Adjustments. So that's kind of why it's a double move to make sure we got all boards covered. Is my understanding?
That's my understanding. That's it. That's what we needed to do.
Yep. So any, any further discussion? Not hearing any. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? All right. Captain Curry, thank you. Appreciate that. Now we'll do some reports. Town attorney, Erin, welcome. You can see that this is not Dave Neal with us tonight, by no means. And Erin, she's our deputy town clerk. And I think you always do, is the planning boards you always working with?
I do, yes.
And what other functions is your full-time function with the town?
I do work with the planning board. I serve as the legal attorney there for the board. And then lots of odds and ends in other capacities, helping Dave work on other items and things to assist the town.
Well, welcome tonight.
Thank you. Thanks for having me. I appreciate it.
Thank you. Anything to report?
I do not have anything to report.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you. How about the town manager? I know we've been getting reports throughout the meeting from you as they pop up. But you got any, any additional reports, Dan?
I have a few updates. And then I wanted to chat with you about Kayla's false. If that's, to give you an update on that. The first one is not community group funding, but the community project funding. We still have not heard back. I anticipated you all want to know about this. But we still have not heard back from the federal level around the distribution of those funds. We're still waiting for HUD. So it's transitioned from the Office of Congresswoman Debra Ross to HUD. So HUD has to assign a number, do all those different things, and then release the funds. And so that, that's the people that we're waiting on. Continue to reach out to them and have not heard back or receiving an update. And so that's the update on that.
Is that the Main Street project you're speaking of?
Yes, and so those are discretionary funds that we had applied for through a grant program. Well, it's not a grant, it's discretionary funding through discretionary spending or bill or what have you. And that funding will go towards ADA improvements at our Main Street Park parking lot, things of that nature. I believe the amount is like five hundred and forty thousand dollars for that work. And another grant that we're waiting to hear back on is another ADA improvement grant for Millbridge Park. And so we're waiting to hear back on that. They have had the field inspection for it, which is where they get, get additional information on the application, the, how the funds will be applied on the ground. But based on the amount of money that they have in the fund for that grant and the amount of people that have applied, we are anticipating receiving that grant since the amount of applicants have not, the amount of requests from applicants have not exceeded the funding for the grant itself. And so that's the tidbit of information that we received, but we're wait, still waiting to hear official notice on that one.
The, the Main Street Park improvement, has all that money been allocated and spent or?
No, we have a plan for the money, but we have not been, it is, we're waiting for it to arrive. But we know what we will do with it, yes.
It's been, and maybe, maybe it's too late, but it's been a couple requests for like special needs equipment and stuff like that. Is, is that something we could look at for special need kids and stuff?
We need to look into that because I don't know if the money is for, oftentimes when you, when they approve the grant for a specific project, you have to do the specific project. And so if we can amend it and it still serves the same purpose of access, that might be something we can do. But the wheels of government turn really, really slow. And so it's taken us, it's been three months since awarding, being awarded. And we haven't received instruction, and so that's something we have to look into.
Yeah, and even if we don't, we probably need to look into the future. We do need some more special need equipment, I think, because we don't really have much out there.
And the, and the other topic is Kalis Falls. If you allow me, I'll pull up a um, a document I created that allows me to be able to talk through it swiftly. So the Kalis Falls, the Kalis Falls development is on Roseville Road. I think that the, our new commissioners may not be familiar with Kalis Falls. But um, you all are, and so I can start from the beginning. And the mayor can amend my memory because this predates me, if I'm corrected, and so.
For Dan, he's not, he's not fully aware of everything out there.
So with the Kalis Falls development, we entered into a, that development was approved for the zoning or special, it was a special use case that was approved with certain conditions. And those conditions were that the, there's a stretch, there's a frontage of that development that faces Roseville Road that we wanted to be updated. In that, in those conditions, it says that the town that we were acquired a right-of-way, which we did, that will build that gap, as we're called, referring to it as the gap on Roseville Road. And those expenses would be reimbursed or the expenses for the work will be paid for via credit to the developer out of those transportation and developments fees. And so the agreement that we had put into place with the developer, we put a pre, a cap in on that amount based off what we had anticipated some of those fees to cost. The cap for that amount was six hundred and eighty, I think it was like six hundred and eighty-four thousand dollars, if my memory serves me correctly. And so what we had found was when Kalis Falls put that particular work out to bid, the first time they put it out, it did not have enough respondents. And so you can respond, you have to post it again. And so they posted it again, we still did not get three bids, but since we did it twice, it's considered an adequate effort to bid it out and get a lowest responsible bid. We received two bids, but both of those bids, the lowest responsible bid was, if far exceeded the amount of money that we anticipated. The initial estimate for the construction of the project was four hundred and twenty thousand dollars. And then the acquisition of the right-of-way easements was a hundred and fifty-five thousand dollars. And so that total work was about five hundred, five hundred and seventy-five thousand dollars. The construction came back at one point three million. And the right-of-way acquisition, yes, one point three million dollars. But it's something we've seen across the board with all construction projects. Willa V went up by a hundred and ten percent. Yes, and even our, the farm entrance has, it doubled over the last three years. And so, excuse me, and the right-of-way easement acquisition that we anticipate to be a hundred and fifty-five thousand dollars ended up selling around two hundred and eighty-three thousand dollars, two and eighty, yeah, two hundred and eighty-three thousand dollars. And so the cost of that project went up about a hundred and fifty percent. Well, a hundred and fifty percent more, so two fifty. And so, so one point, one point five million dollars. So with those fees that we said that we want to pay was six hundred and eighty thousand dollars. One thing that we've done since we found out about this, which was about two days ago, is I sat down in the planning department to get an estimated amount of fees that will be paid for, paid for the work related to that development. The transportation development fees and based off what we, based off the two phases that will be, have been submitted or are currently under review, is seven hundred and forty-eight thousand dollars. So that will leave a gap in between the fees and how much it costs of, about the equivalent amount. There is a third phase for that project that has been submitted. And so if they were to do all three phases of the, of the project, then the total fees will, total one point six million dollars. But there have only been two phases submitted. And um, we anticipate that there, that the third one is on the way. But the fourth and fifth may or may not be built based off some findings, geological findings on the site, which is granite, which is what everybody's finding. And so that particular project, even though the developer has remained the same, the builder has changed, I won't say twice since the initiation of the project, based off the economy, number one, two findings on the site. And so the builder now, I think, is D.R. Horton. But the current situation as we have it is, which will be a decision that we can bring back to you for further conversation, we can put together some graphs or any information packet that you all need to look at, is that we need to decide if we would like to move forward with it, knowing that there may be, there will likely be about six hundred thousand dollars that we'll likely have to pay, for lack of better words, out of our pocket to go towards that work because it'll be a difference in that.
Yeah, I wish Dave was here, he might could answer the question. Because I, I was thinking the agreement, they paid, they paid for everything and then we give them credit.
Right, but the cost, the cost to build the work is less than the amount of credits. So there's a difference in that. And so the credits will max out at seven hundred and forty-eight thousand dollars.
Not if they do the whole thing.
But they have not, so we working on the information that we have right now, which is they have not submitted construction drawings for phase three, which would take, yes. And so the, the overall proposed development has five phases. Those five phases are four hundred and fifty-four, four hundred and fifty-four lots at thirty-two hundred bucks, that's one point six million dollars. And so if they build all five phases, we will get one point six million dollars. But if they don't build four and five, they don't, and it's only one through three, it'll be a less amount. Yes, and so the two that have construction drawings that are in phase one has, has approved construction drawings and has final subdivision plat. And so we know for sure that the, the transportation development fees on that will be four hundred and twelve thousand eight hundred dollars. Phase two of that has approved construction drawings, but there isn't a final subdivision plat in review. But we know that the transportation development fees with that will be three hundred and thirty-six thousand dollars for. So for the two phases that have been submitted is seven hundred and forty-eight thousand dollars. And so the difference we will have to pay, we will have to.
I don't think we would, I mean, that's what we need to talk to Dave, unless Dave says so. Because I don't, because really, I think the special use permit, because that's what we did back then, a special use permit, so they had to pay for it and we give them credits. Now, if it takes them twenty-five years to get credits, I'm not sure if that matters, you know?
So you're saying that the agreement says that they pay the difference?
No, they pay, they pay for the cost and then we give them credits. So in other words, if they, if, if they use all their credits up and build everything in five years, then they, they would get their recovery in five years. If it take them twenty-five years to do all their phases, they, in other words, I don't think, it was ever agreed that we would pay anything upfront. It's all credits as they build.
Correct, but if.
And I think the, the cap has to do with the town manager's authority, in other words.
That, that was a decision, yeah, based off.
Yeah, so the town manager had the authority to go up to that amount. But the credits can go up to whatever they have, you know, how many lots they got. But we need, probably need to talk to Dave to clarify, you understand, Lauren, what I'm saying? I think, because you know, just because they said we ain't going to do these three phases right now, it doesn't mean they get out of that agreement. I mean, they agreed, they agreed to build their subdivision to a certain size and, and do the gap and pay for it in credits. And if it takes them a long time to get the credits, I think that's on them, in my opinion.
Without having reviewed it and not having the, the history or the background, I mean, generally, yes. But you know, all sorts of things could happen if that, you know, they chose not to build it and they sold the land and did something different, then that special use permit still applies to that land. So you know, that would obviously have to come back before you all to change it. Otherwise, whatever the agreement was, would still apply. But again, I don't, don't have the, the background of it, I'm sorry to speak to it.
What was the action you wanted tonight, anything, just information?
That's information, I spoke with Dave yesterday. And that's what, then I, before I met with you about Main Street Project. And so my understanding was that there will be a difference that need to be made up. And we have to decide if we want to make up that difference. And so that's, that's, that was what, that was why I went to planning to get the additional information to figure out the difference.
Yeah.
And so we can talk more about it to see if that's.
If I, if I heard what you said, it was, make sure I know the numbers. It was one point five for the work and everything total.
Yes.
And they have a total of one point six million in credits if they bill out.
If they build all five phases.
And I think the special use permit had nothing about a cap, anything. It just said that if they build a road, then we could give them credits to reimburse them up to whatever they maximum credit. Follow what I'm saying?
Okay, and so what we can do is, I guess my recommendation is that we add it as an agenda item to, we can cover it in the first meeting of next, the first, first business meeting in August. And Dave will be here and we can kind of do a reassessment and then put together a presentation that sums up that agreement more succinctly so that you all can be able to take action on it.
And I guess the second thing I was told that the, the bid expires in ten days, so in ten days.
Yes, we put in a request for them to extend the, I don't know what the period is referred to formally, but the grace period. There's a grace period, I want to say forty-five days after bid is submitted to where it remains quote, good, end quote. And so, and won't adjust with market trends or what have you. And so there's been a request to the builder that submitted that bid to extend that period for us. But it is, we will not be able to meet that deadline based off the fact that we don't have a second meeting of this month to take action within. And um, and so we told them that our next meeting will be the first, the August the sixth or something like that, the first Tuesday of August. And so we communicated, Dave communicated that to them and we're waiting to hear back about it. Could we get that contract between Kalis and the town so that we can take a look at it and?
Yes, that's the developer's agreement, Erin, that Dave made up. That's kind of what he's talking about. And, and then we probably need to look and see what the special use permit says.
Yes.
Because you know, that'll tell you.
And Eric, since we're talking about Roseville Road, we have a number of developments being in the process along that road. And if they're all built, that road's going to be wholly inadequate, no matter whether all of these additions or improvements are done on Roseville Road. And this is probably beyond the scope of what you've raised, but looking at it and looking at some of the traffic impact analyses that have been done for that road, it really needs to be expanded to four-lane road. And nothing I've seen is proposing that. And my concern is that if we build the developments along Roseville Road and don't make that a four-lane road with a light at the bypass, we're going to have people going north to go south and they're going to be so backed up, they're going to block northbound traffic and vice versa, based on the, the, you know, peak hours of traffic. And I think that's something we need to really look at because even, I think it was the Woodliffe Assemblage, traffic impact analysis showed a degradation of the road with all the improvements that have been proposed, and I just don't think that's acceptable.
Understood, we can look into that.
Yeah, I would, when do we do the study on Roseville? That was before, before they got on the board, right? We got a study we did on that road, probably.
Yeah.
Yes.
You probably need.
I looked at the one we had, because StanTech did one a few months ago. And it showed a degradation even with all of the improvements that are proposed by the numerous developments along that road. Because no one's proposing a four-lane road and it's not adequate to handle the traffic that's being proposed with all the developments. So something else needs to be done there. And I think we really need to look at that in order to avoid a real problem.
Yeah, I thought, I thought we had been looked at that already, didn't we? You said we need to have, we, we paid them to look at it and I forgot what they came back with. We need to, we need to see, but I don't think they came back with a four-lane road, did they? No, I'm not sure either. But we, we paid for a study to, and they considered all the houses and everything, what, what it needed. You was here with that, because that was recently.
Yeah, because this was something that we was asking DOT. When is, when are they going to warrant a traffic light?
Right.
At that high school? We kept asking.
So I'm talking about on Roseville and four oh one bypass.
Yes.
As opposed to the U-turn.
Yeah, we, so we did a, a study of Everett all the way out to Roseville Road and down to the, with the Mitchell Mill. It was the entire corridor.
Avenue too.
Yeah. So we had to look at their recommendations, but they had recommendations for all the intersections and everything else through that too.
It was from ninety-eight, it was from ninety-eight highway all the way down to Mitchell Mill.
Okay.
I forgot what meeting that was, but I, I found it and emailed it to you.
Okay, thank you.
I wrote that down.
Thank you for bringing that up.
Sure.
So where, where you at with your update? Anything, anything else on this particular Kalis topic or?
We can bring it back before you, we'll get the information and make, and have it available for discussion. The most important thing was just to bring it to your attention, given that timeframe. And so we've requested an extension, so hopefully we don't have to go out to bid again. But hopefully, if we do go out to bid again, then we can come with a, a better price. If we're to be able, if we could clarify anything about, around the drawings or provide some, a different, some alterations or leniencies or add cross-sections so they can, you know, narrow down their calculations. And so, but that's essentially where we are with it.
I think, if I recall, Kalis was approved in twenty.
Twenty nineteen.
Huh?
Twenty nineteen.
Eighteen?
Nineteen.
Nineteen. So that's five years ago.
Yeah, and the other thing I'd like to do too is, you know, we got rid of Fee and Lou because that was awful. And now we've gone to this thing and I don't know if this is working out just as well either. So I think maybe we should look at, see what other towns around us are doing as well, just to see if there's something, they're doing something different or if this is just the best way to do it, I don't know. But I just feel like we keep getting caught in situations every time. Just because of the, the timeframe, the developments, everything else, it's taking us forever to develop something and then, by then it's double, triple.
That's why I don't think we caught, because you know, if, if they build that thing out to what you got in here was a fifteen hundred homes and one point six million dollars, either that'll come to us as cash.
Right.
Or either it comes, give credits to them, so that's why I don't really.
Right.
And um, it's, if we have to pay it upfront, then that's the big thing.
And to, to touch on that, I had a conversation with the planning department. So what, what we will be doing is, we realized that our traffic, our transportation. So what we'll be doing is, we realize that our traffic, our transportation development fees are not adjusting with the cost to build this infrastructure in real time. And so we'll be doing an assessment and likely bringing a budget amendment for our fee schedule for that particular item to make sure that when we are getting these fees, they can actually build the thing that we are, that they're paying us for. And so, so there will likely be an adjustment in those fees.
Very good. That's it?
That's all I have.
Okay. How about town board? Any updates from town board? Or any communications anybody want to give? I know y'all give really good updates on your, on your liaison reports. Anything additional y'all want to talk about? Okay, well, appreciate that. I do see on the agenda, we have a closed session request there. So I entertain a motion for that.
I move, we move to closed session pursuant to NCGS 143-318.11A6 for personnel matter.
Second.
Okay. We have a motion of second. Any other discussion? Not all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
And we will be adjourning into this closed session. And we will come back once we close the executive session. So we'll be back to close the meeting now. So thanks. Appreciate it. And we are in executive session.